I'd like to ask everyone who remains standing while we observe a moment of silence for longtime board member Bonnie Hammer, who unfortunately passed away last week.
Pursuant to the OPAH Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public law in 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the At-Third-Pop Press Issue of January 18, 2013. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school districts have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met.
The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the proposed 2013-2014 school budget. But just before we do that, Mr. Sampson is going to provide us with violence and vandalism.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. So, for those of you who have been attending the board meetings regularly over the past two years, you can understand that the state has required some changes in reporting of violence and vandalism. Traditionally, this had been an annual report that was given, usually in the fall of each year, about the previous year. What the state has changed in requirements is that the report has to occur twice annually, twice in a year, and it has to be broken into Phase 1 and Phase 2. So Phase 1 involves all incidents from September 1, 2012, to December 31, 2012. And by code, I'm required to report on these figures at some point prior to June 30th. So I'm doing this tonight. It's a relatively brief presentation. However, I think that it tells a wonderful story of some of the positive aspects of what's happening in our school districts related to student discipline and some of the ways that, as a school district, we're trying to combat poor decisions on a lot of our students. And I will say that folks know that this year, we went to a new bell schedule in our high schools. And what that bell schedule did was it eliminated the traditional homeroom period. Previously, prior to this year, students would come into a homeroom period and then transfer again. You know, it was an increased number of student passing time. Now, students report to school, they go right to their first period class, that's their homeroom. We think that in September of this year, that that had a significant impact on our student discipline. The building principals, who've been here for a number of years, unanimously agreed that our month of September was one of the best openings that anybody could remember. And the statistics bear that out, actually, in terms of the number of student incidences. So what you'll see when I go through this is that the total number of violence and vandalism incidents for Phase 1 of 2012 versus Phase 1 of 2011, we're down a total of 37 incidents, which is significant. So, here are the numbers. Folks can read, so I won't go through this, other than to say you can see a drop in basically every statistical category. In the unduplicated total, Phase 1, 2011/12 was 113 incidents, while the unduplicated total in Phase 1, 2012/13 was 76 incidents. So, a dramatic drop. And I'll speak a little bit at the end of the presentation about some of the programs that we have in place and some of the -- we're engaged in wonderful training activity now. There are a number of our staff members around detecting substance abuse and awareness of drugs and alcohol and students to be even more proactive in terms of power of reporting this and responding to it rather than being proactive rather than reactive with student needs. We have six high schools, we have, you know, 11,000, 500, 600 students, give or take. We understand that incidents will occur in our high schools, like any other high school in the nation, and we want to just make sure that we mitigate those factors that cause poor student decisions as much as possible. So here is the violence category broken down more specifically for folks. And again, you can see simple assault, steps offense, criminal threat, threat are all down. The number of fights unfortunately remain the same. But again, the total number of incidents down from last year to previous year. Vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse. Again, folks can see that, that we're down in most of those categories, there's the reduction there. We feel good about that. You know, we flatline where we are with substance abuse, and I'll talk about that with what we're doing in the school district momentarily. The types of illegal substances used. Marijuana continues to be the drug of choice in our high school. We've had students have been caught using under the influence. Although, again, our total incidents were down under marijuana. You can see for yourself there, the numbers are relatively stable with the types of drugs and/or alcohol. We did have a slight uptick in the number of students who refused to take a drug test, who were suspected of being under the influence. Our policy dictates that that is automatic possible. We don't give those students the option to refuse the test if we suspect that they're under the age of 12. And what I spoke earlier, this is a month-by-month breakdown. You can see the month of September, so 15 incidents only. And we held true. So, you know, I looked at this and I first thought, okay, well, you know, end of October into November was Hurricane Sandy, so, you know, we obviously closed. But however, if you see month-by-month, we're basically down across the board if you look at it in a three-year trend in all of our incidents there. We do a number of things here where we focus on being proactive, as I said earlier, rather than reactive. And a number of programs, one of the -- we have, you know, a number of guest speakers that come into our high schools regularly to talk about, you know, disruptive decisions, whether that's drugs and alcohol, whether that's dating violence, whether that's being tolerant of other individuals. You know, we have a very well-developed Student Parents Handbook that we go over in each of our buildings. Our rules are clear and concise and reiterated over and over again to both students and parents, and I think that allows us to be successful. Just this past week, another example, our Team Driver Safety Program is one of the more remarkable programs we can find for a high school. A lot of folks don't engage in such programs. And we require that our parents of our students who earn their license have to come to those programs, and they're pretty powerful people. And we send a message again, it's focusing on poor decisions and making sure that students who earn their license approach that in a mature manner. And we have our typical state mandated programs, like Week of Lisabacc and Anti-Violence Week. And what happens in all of our schools during those times is there are a number of programs that occur throughout the school. And in each department, we usually have a theme in terms of the lessons for that day. And we have a tremendous amount of success with those programs. And we really set the standard, I think, in terms of the state and the sheriffs. Few other items, just some general school assemblies. But one thing I really wanted to talk to is what we're doing this year with Dr. Raj. Dr. Raj is a nationally recognized expert on drug and alcohol prevention and detection and understanding of what drugs and alcohol do to the brain. And we've brought him into our school district. He's been at each one of our high schools, he's presented to our students in each one of our high schools. And we've gone a step further, and we've identified an intensive cohort throughout the district, which includes our SACS and key guidance and child study team personnel, who are spending three days of intensive training with Dr. Raj over the course of the year, really just to increase their understanding of, you know, substance abuse and drugs and alcohol and how that impacts the teenage mind and body, and how to be proactive in recognizing signs of that in schools. And then we've extended that to some shorter training, but we branched out to our teachers, to key cohort of teachers in each of our buildings, who have gone through some training with Dr. Raj as well to recognize some of these indicators and be able to be, again, more proactive. Hold your applause. And our total number of HIBs for Phase 1, we had 15 non-investigations that were deemed non-HIBs from September 1 through December 31st, and we had seven confirmed HIBs from September 1 through December 31st. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Boyce, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business, so I'm essentially the Chief Financial Officer of the district. The purpose of tonight's presentation, for those of you in attendance tonight and also for those of you who are watching on video, is to review the financial investment component of the district. And I put it that way very deliberately, because for a school district, for this organization, the financial discussion is really a discussion of investment. The return on that investment is measured in terms of student achievement. And this is an interesting distinction between a public school district and a private industry. So in private industry, the investment measured in terms of dollars, and the return is also in terms of dollars. So that purity of measure actually makes it easier to determine the success of the company because you have those state measures. And schools have, and states have, have worked with different ideas on how to reconcile those two things, to actually be able to measure a return on the investment made by a community in a school district. And it's taken various forms of, you know, different metrics, indicator, indexes to -- Some states have done that and fooled around with that. So different ideas have come and gone. Really, the focus for tonight is the investment side, is the financial side. I'll do my best to work in the performance stuff as well, and I will include some of that data. But I think it's important for those of you watching this presentation to also check out some of the data on the New Jersey Department of Education website, School Report Card Assessment Data. Our own website houses a lot of information. And probably one of the more important areas to look at is the strategic plan, what some of that thinking culminated in, because it's a good sense of direction for what's important to this community and for the investment of resources that we do have available, what is going to be the best way to employ it. So the structure of tonight's presentation is really in three parts. The first is just scope of operation. For those of you who are not very familiar with Freehold Regional High School District, the second is the structure of the school budget, a school budget, and finally, some performance metrics. So those are the three areas that we're going to look at. So first, the scope of operation, and this is pretty quick, and many of you know them, Mr. Sampson touched on some of them. You know, decades ago, the communities of Western Monmouth County decided to get together and really put together just a giant shared service. And the service was high school education. And that has evolved to what we have here today. Some, just under 12,000 students that were housed in six high schools, coming from eight different municipalities. The students come to us through seven K-8 districts. And out in English Town is a K-8 regional district. So those eight towns, seven K-8 districts, one high school district. As you can see, we have our full complement of, obviously, court programs for both our regular and special education students. But we also have some very highly specialized programs, you know, learning centers, academies. About 1.5 million square feet of facility, 200 square mile roughly footprint, which for transportation purposes, you can imagine, is quite an undertaking. So that's just a sense of the scale of an organization by New Jersey standards. We are the largest regional high school district in the state. But just representing or comparing us to really all school districts, we're one of the larger school districts in the state altogether. So that's a little sense of the scale of our operation. Let's talk about the structure of the school budget. And again, I said, I'm sure people don't spend their free time learning about fund accounting and that type of thing, so let me at least orient everybody to how this is financially organized. And it's a fund system. And really, the best way to talk about this is let me start from the bottom. The Debt Service Fund is used to account for just one thing, and that's payments on debt. Now, where does the debt come from? Bond issuances in school districts are for major capital projects that were passed by referendum. So the idea being that a referendum was put to the community, they voted for it. What they voted for was to issue bonds, use it for the construction project, and then also, the community signed off on the 20 subsequent years of bond payments. So that's what the Debt Service Fund houses exclusively. The Special Revenue Fund is for very specific purpose funding grants, essentially is what it comes down to. And it's federal, state, or local. So the main players here are federal grants. You have NCLB, I'm sure you've heard of that, IDEA, which is intended to supplement the special plus of special education programs. And there's also some state grants, they primarily flow through grants to non-public schools. It's a very small amount. But for the most part, it's those two major programs, federal programs, that are in the special revenue. Now, everything else is in the general fund. It's everything that you would normally think of in terms of what would be an expense for a new school district. So the financing, the transactions that are the day-to-day operations, salaries, facilities, transportation, all of the services, athletics and the like, are all housed in the general fund. So that's the structure, what we're going to talk primarily about tonight, is the general fund. And in doing that, I think this is the best time to talk about in designing a school budget, when a school approaches this, what is their mindset, what is the mentality for doing in terms of revenues? What revenues are available and how are those dollars going to be deployed? There has been a significant change in New Jersey, and I've said this the last few times, that I've had a microphone in front of me, that we really have shifted to a revenue-driven funding model with the imposition of the 2% cap, a cap on property taxes in New Jersey. Now, legislation has significant influence on the operation of the school district, and this is one of the ways that it does it. So when you are defining your revenues, and really, with revenues, if you take a step back here, there's really only two major players in revenue. There's state aid and property taxes. The breakdown is property taxes fund about 65% of our budget, and state aid about 28%. So into the 90% is from those two areas. So the property tax cap, I think, has really changed the dynamic. And from that component of revenue, it has given some stability looking forward as far as what can we expect and what's the range of decision that we can make as far as property tax revenue. On the other hand, state aid has been a bit more volatile. And it's volatile for various different reasons. And really, what state aid comes from is the state of New Jersey has developed a funding formula. It's called the School Funding Reform Act of 2010. And in there, they went through a great degree of effort to really determine what should it cost to educate a student in New Jersey. And there's very comprehensive reports periodically updated with new cost factors. And it does recognize that depending on the grade level, it's going to cost different. So elementary school kids are less expensive than high school kids, for example. It also goes into at the at-risk population, and it puts a value to that as well. Special ed population, limited numbers proficiency. It also looks at geographic cost indexes, right? So in Bergen County, it's more expensive to do business in Bergen County than in another county in South Jersey. Okay, so it also factors that in. With the state aid, many of factors influence the stability of that. And remember, you know, when we do budget design, it's really a multi-year. We look at multiple years to say, what are we going to invest in today that we're going to be in a position to sustain for years to come so that we can actually reap the return on that investment with that program being in place over time? So it is important to look cautiously at state aid and determine to what degree of confidence am I going to have in projections related to this? For various reasons, as I said, economic conditions, Hurricane Sandy is certainly going to put some pressure on the state budget, other political factors putting pressure on the state budget. And that's really part of our reality. Just to sort of demonstrate a little bit about the volatility, this is a quick chart of the last five years. Those are just the percentage change in the amount of state aid that we've received each year. So the only thing that I'm looking to demonstrate there is that it's a bit unpredictable. It's also issued fairly late in the year. We received our state aid numbers right at the end of February, and here we are less than a month later proposing a budget. What state aid will be next year? I couldn't tell you with much certainty at all. There are many factors that will happen between now and then. But it is a consideration when we're designing a budget, and we want to be properly conservative and cautious in our present. So let's take a look at the revenue items specifically. I want to talk just a bit about another piece of legislation, or a big piece of legislation regarding the 2% on levy on the property tax, the amendment on that. Now, the cap does have some provisions for being able to extend it beyond that 2%. Certain enrollment adjustments are available depending on what your enrollment situation is. Health benefit adjustments, but there's also a provision for banked cap. And the spirit of it is, where the state has said, okay, schools, so you can raise it 2%, but if you choose to raise it less than 2%, we'll allow you to take the difference that you didn't access, and you need to basically set it aside and use it in a future if you wish. So their thinking being worst-case scenario, even if a district does access that in a future year, at the end of the day, it was two and two, and they ended up getting it. But if they could defer it a little bit, it was an incentive to schools to, you know, not take the 2% because it was the last opportunity you would ever have to take that 2%. This property tax cap has been in place for now three years. The first year, the district typed a zero increase on the levy. Last year, it was 1%. This year, we're recommending 2%. But really, we could, considering the cap banking provision, we could increase the levy 5.5% and still be considered within the cap because it has that cap banking provision. We're not making that recommendation, but this is just an opportunity for me to make you aware of the different scenarios. Now, as we move forward and that cap banking remains available to us, and depending on the situation, circumstances of the years ahead of us, we do have that available to us. There are other revenue options available to school districts as well. Schools can put a question on the ballot, the November ballot, and ask for voter approval for a specific purpose. That would be funded through a tax levy, that's one. And then a referendum, that option still remains. Not an option for operating costs, but for capital costs, that option still remains. You can see here that state aid has been flat this year, we got flat state aid. The calculation of that is interesting, it's very complex. There's a couple variables in there that are somewhat unpredictable. So being able to sort of mathematically project what should be happening is not always, it's not always possible to do that because of those variables and how unpredictable they are. Just some of the other categories I briefly touch on. State aid, extraordinary aid is a, think of it as a separate pot of money in the state budget, aside from state aid for school districts. And its very specific purpose is to help schools out with some special ed costs that exceed certain thresholds. And in February each year, a lot of information is put together and sent to the state. They receive that from all the school districts. The amount of eligible costs that the state receives, of course, far exceeds the amount of money that they had set aside in the budget. Not that they're surprised, or anybody would be surprised, but they set aside a certain amount, and then they just progress it so everybody gets X percentage, whatever, they divvy it up as fair as they can. So it's difficult in one way to predict because it would not only depend on what those costs are per year district, but also for every other district, which is not available at that time. But we think that we've been able to be close to this mark or hit this mark for the last few years, so we'll keep it at anticipating that 1.5 million. Fund balance, aside from the 2% cap on the property tax, there's another 2% cap that you may have heard of, and that's on fund balance. So the idea being that school districts can only retain a certain amount of money beyond their annual operating budget. It was a result of legislation, we call it a 1701, that really, it was done, there was a political purpose for it, but it changed the fund balance cap from 6% of your budget to 2% of your budget. Interestingly, when it was 6% cap, there was also a floor of 3%. And the purpose of the floor was that it would be irresponsible to keep any less than that aside for any emergency scenarios. But they pushed it all the way down to 2%, which at that time forced a lot of fund balance into the subsequent school budgets, thereby artificially lowering property taxes for one year. That was really the purpose of it. But in the meantime, we're still at a 2% cap. Now, if you think of this in terms of, you know, your home budget, right? And so if you think of the income, your family income, and 2% of that, and really, that's all you can have access to at any given time, and no credit cards, by the way. You know, it's tight, and it's something that we have to be very aware of. There are some reserves, which are opportunities to put money aside similar to fund balance, but only for specific purposes, and primarily it's for facility purposes. So at the end of each, at the end of each year, to the extent you're in excess of that 2%, that needs to be used in the next time you put a budget together, okay? So we've had a relatively consistent amount of fund balance being appropriated to support a future budget. And then the others miscellaneous, we have some tuition income from students who are going to move into the school district, but maybe not till November or December. Parents, although not residents, may want their kids to start right in September, which I can certainly understand that. So they have to pick up a little tuition from September to when they start, when they actually are residents and paying tax. So other smaller items make up the other category. The Special Revenue Fund, and you'll notice that there is a significant decline in the Special Revenue Fund. And that is, since that is primarily those two federal programs that I mentioned earlier, there is, there are significant cuts to many federal expenditures from what's called sequestration, which you may have heard, it was also synonymous with the fiscal cliff right back there at the end of December, but the sequestration part of it, they pushed down a few months into March, but now have confirmed that, yeah, we can expect at least a 25% reduction in NCLB and IDEA funding. Now, although those federal grants do fund some things that are above and beyond Now, although those federal grants do fund some things that are above and beyond what we do, and that's the purpose of them, the line and share of them represents a cost that we, we need to incur anyhow. So what that effectively does is push the, that burden back up into the general fund because many of those costs are still exist, but the, the funding is no longer available for that. So overall, 2%, 2.2% increase in the, in the overall operation, 2.7% increase in the general fund. And really, the, the numbers to take note of here is the flat state aid, which is, which is an interesting scenario. And, and, you know, with the impact of the hurricane, as I said, and the state of the economy, I think school districts are, are welcome a flat state aid. Certainly could be worse, and we hope it were better, but that is what it is. And then 2% on the levy is what we're proposing here tonight. So regarding property taxes, and I, I think this is worthwhile, I'll give you a moment to just to look at that, to see what the impact is from the, for the different towns. Now, it does not intuitively make sense that some towns are going up and some towns are going down. And that's because there's a very specific calculation as to how the Freo regionals' tax levy is apportioned to the eight municipalities. And I'll just give you a very executive-level summary. There, there are really two things that go into it. The, essentially, the fair market value of the property in your municipality, and that is split. It's split on a basis of your school-aged children. The number of school-aged children you have in elementary schools, okay, eight schools versus high schools. So if 30% of particular town's school-aged children are of high school age, then 30% of the fair market value of your community is sectioned off and put into the high school value column, I'll call it. And that's done for each of the eight towns to come up with the equalized value for regional tax apportionment purposes. So then your value in relation to the total of that town is what's called your percentage share. If you were to add up all those percentage shares, it would come to 100. But those percentage shares are now applied to the tax levy, and that's how much each town pays in levy. Now, there's a situation at each individual town about then how is that share, how does that affect the tax rate for that town and how, how does it actually impact the residents of that town? That distribution is based on assessed value, which may or may not be fair market value. It varies from town to town and doesn't, doesn't make much of a difference as long as everybody in the town is at the same, on the same basis. So when you see changes in the tax rate, there are a couple of different influences on that. A town may have received more percentage share because maybe all of a sudden they got more high school kids. There was a shift from high school, from elementary into high school, thereby increasing their, their equalized value and your percentage share. I will, I will give you just some quick stats here, and then I'll talk to some of the, specifically some of the ones that stand out. Seven of the eight municipalities lost equalized value, which is just simply another term for fair market value. So there was a, a common trend that the property value in municipalities went down. One state about the same, Coltsnecks, 0.2% increase, but not down. The others did. Five of eight lost enrollment overall. So overall, there's a, about a 1.5% reduction in enrollment in school-aged children, K to 12, 18, I'm sorry, for all eight municipalities. So there's a slight decline. But there's also some movement from elementary to high school, which is going to impact that. I'll, I'll tell you, there was a 13.7% increase in high school enrollment in Farmingdale. We'll talk about Farmingdale first. So when that happens, that impacts their percentage share and then subsequently their tax rate that the, the residents of Farmingdale end up paying. Now, 13.7% increase in high school enrollment for Farmingdale amounts to eight kids. So they had an increase of eight kids, and it had that much of a significant impact on them. In fact, on the, in the high school, on the high schools, there were five of the eight, I'm sorry, six of the eight had increases in high school enrollment. Whereas the majority of the K to eight for the elementary enrollment went down, so, which is an interesting dynamic as some of that value shifts more to the high school and the regional levy. Some other interesting ones, Freo Borough lost 10% of the value of their town according to the state. So that was, that was the largest. Freo Township, Mr. Mazik and I had extensive conversations about this and, and other matters of budget. But Freo Township is in a difficult situation because they, they, they kind of have everything possible to store the value of their community, their properties, was impacted. The elementary school enrollment went down and the high school enrollment went up, so that's twice pushing more, you know, equalized value and more basis for the regional tax levy to them. And so, and then also their assessed value went down by more than 10%. So that, those three things not only pushed more of our levy into their column, but then the reduction of the, the property in town was less to spread that tax over, thereby increasing the tax rate. Just, and I was talking with some of the folks over at Freo Township Municipality, because they're just, so we all are aware of what, what's, what's happening with our various budgets. But if the assessed value didn't change, the tax increase in Freo Township would have been about 1.5 cents. But that's how much impact losing 10% of the value of your town has. So Freo Township impacted primarily, I'll say, there's several factors, but primarily because of the loss of assessed value. Farmingdale is seeing the impact of a shift of students from elementary to high school age, and they're seeing the, the impact of that. The, the final column there is just, take note, that's per 100,000 of assessed value. So you would need to look on your property tax bill, understand what your assessed value is in order to translate that into the impact on your home budget. So with, with revenue, with revenue being discussed first and really understanding, here's the resources that we have available. Now, now the process is to what's the best way to deploy those resources? What you have here is, and obviously the total is equal for the revenues, is, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong screen there. So here, here are the major influences that are happening for appropriations. Again, budget law is still something that we have to be aware of. There are various caps and limitations within designing the spending side of a budget. Administrative cost, for example, is, is one of those caps. But there's also some other things that impact our spending, and that's state mandates, okay? And for, for many good reasons, or there are many changes put on what are the requirements of the school district to teach. And I'll, I'll note three of those that are, that have significant impact, the new teacher evaluation system. There is, you know, costs associated with that, not only the tool itself, but the training and the materials, and then, and then ultimately the time is really what the major cost is going to be, teacher evaluation system. Common Core is a new national standard of curriculum, really a determination of what should students learn, what do students need to learn? And I think it's all about four, so the vast majority of states in the nation have adopted the Common Core. So there is some national consistency with that. We are in the, in the process of gearing up for that, and, you know, that's reflected throughout this budget, whether it's curriculum writing revisions, or staff training, or the purchase of textbooks. We have significant amount for geometry and English one provided for. I think this is a district-wide implementation of a curriculum, a new curriculum consistent with the Common Core. And then there's, there's PARC, which is an assessment partnership for assessment of readiness for college and careers. So this is the new accountability system for student tests. And there are, and that's really an evolving area. There's all of the details really haven't been released yet on what the impact of that is, but one of the things that we have provided for in this budget and we know will impact us in the future is the technology infrastructure that needs to be in place in which tests 12,000 kids periodically electronically on a computer. So we have provisions in here for some of that, that infrastructure that we need in place. We have 500 student computers provided for in this budget. So that, that certainly has an impact on us as well. And there are other things, but those are three of the larger players that are in place right now. There's also some, some good news, some legislatively for the budget, at least, and I included up here, Chapter 78. Chapter 78 is a, is a requirement for contributions of health insurance benefits from employees, and it's phased in over four years, but we are in the midst of that, and it's, it's significant. It's significant to the point where, and you'll see when we look at some of the categories of appropriations, that, you know, we've been able to hold areas like health benefits, employee benefits relatively flat because employee, increasing employee contributions are offsetting the increase in health benefits costs. So that's, that's beneficial to our budget and really frees up resources for some other things. So these things, mandates and how they roll out and what we need to do to be prepared for them, they're part of our long-term planning on the appropriation side, just to give you, again, a sense of how approached of it. The appropriations from a comparative, and I'll just touch base on these categories relatively quickly, and there's some other information, performance metrics in these areas that I have later in the presentation. Instruction is for all of the things that happen in the classroom that are part of direct instruction, and that's, that's teacher salaries, textbook supplies, tuition for out-of-district placement, those direct instruction type items. Support services are for a variety of things, guidance, child study, team lead, specialists, the development of our, our curriculum, you know, extraordinary services related to students, individualized education programs, and things of that nature. The administrative category is, is a shorter list. It's my office, personnel, superintendent's office. The main office is the principal's office in the schools, and also the technology department is also included in the administrative component. Operations and maintenance, as you would expect, is the, the upkeep and maintenance of our facilities, whether it's custodial, maintenance, grounds, and security costs are also included in this classification of expenditures. Transportation, obviously, to and from school, as well as transportation for a variety of other, whether it's athletic events or team competitions or a number of other things, but the whole transportation operation. Employee benefits, that houses primarily, that is health, health benefits, but also in there is, it's like, so payroll tax for the federal government. Pension contributions for employees in one particular pension system. The TPAF, the Teachers Pension and Annuity Fund, which is the vast majority of our employees, are members of that fund, contributions, employer contributions are made directly by the state to that fund, so they're not reflected in here. Works, compensation, insurance, and items of that nature. And finally, capital-related items, which is equipment and other construction capital projects that we've included here. So I'll, I'll just suddenly touch on some of the, the influences here. Our staffing is up slightly. There's an additional seven teachers and 14 paraprofessionals included in this budget, and so that's all directly related to our students' needs of our population that we're going to have with us next year. But that's it for staffing. As I mentioned, there's preparation for some of these upcoming mandates, whether it's, it's the technology, infrastructure, or the, the curriculum aspect of it, textbooks as well, those are provided for, the phase in of that. Our transportation department, there's 11 vehicles. The way it works with school buses is buy stable, 12 years, and then you're done, and you can't use them, regardless of even if they're in perfect shape. 12 years, that's it. So we've settled into a fairly consistent replacement schedule. Five large, 54-passenger buses, five 24-passenger buses, one wheelchair van that we have provided for in this budget. And I've already sort of commented on the health benefit situation. That's fairly flat. We did take a one-year, one-year off for a contribution to our own unemployment trust fund. The $150,000 that's been restored in this budget as well. The capital items, equipment is, it's a, a variety of items. Much of it, buildings and grounds related for, you know, the, the equipment that they need to clean and maintain our facilities. There's also instructional equipment in there. I'll give you some examples. You know, there's KFOB upgrades, there's some security upgrades included in there, some smartphones, fiber phone, wrestling mats. So there's those types of things that are more significant cost-wise that are included in there, as well as from the technology department, some file servers and that type of thing. Also included in the capital section is, are some capital projects. There are $1 million worth of capital projects, and this is something that we've had to put on the back burner in recent years as the economy and, and money has been fairly tight and, but there are some things that we do need to do. There are HVAC, some really pressing HVAC projects that we need to take care of, and some health and safety stuff and security-related stuff that we're beginning a door replacement schedule. We just need to make sure that the, the security of our facilities and, and so some doors need to be replaced, that's included in here. Classroom conversions were different programs, different specialized programs that needed to be in place for September to handle that population of students. And Manaliken High School, the generator there is really something that should have been replaced, should have replaced that a while ago. But that's, you know, when we were down and out of power on Sandy, really, some of this stuff really highlighted, things like the generator at Manaliken High School, something we need to take care of. But one of the things I do want to point out specifically is our, our tracks. And it's something that has, with all credit to our buildings and grounds department, has advocated to me for several years that our tracks, you know, we can patch and we can keep them going, we can keep them going, but it's not, we're not going to be able to rebuild for that. And they're big-ticket items, $300,000, $400,000 for a new track. We have one track in this budget. We hope to maintain that for the years to come so that we can get on a cycle of replacement of tracks in a responsible way. We also have money in our operations and maintenance budget for repairs of the other tracks. But Manaliken High School's track is, is one that needs some immediate attention, and that is included in this budget as well. So, you know, it's, it's difficult to look at just one screen and some numbers on the screen and have a sense of comfort for the community to say, okay, is, is it being done well? Are our dollars being spent wisely? And as I touched on earlier, there are some financial indicators, performance indicators, educational, and there's also academic. So let's, let's take a look at some of those. The source for a lot of this information is the Tax Payers Guide to Education Spending, formerly called the Comparative Cost Protocol, and that's available on the Department of Ed website. And what they do is they take audited financial information, they, they analyze that, and they compare it to similar districts. And one of the, one of the ways they identify similar districts, it's not only by grade range service for a number of students in that particular district, but also by socioeconomic status of the community. So, you know, to, to look at some of the financial indicators, this is per pupil spending, and let me just, those are the categories that you just saw on, on the last slide, the different spending categories. Now, in, in the state of New Jersey, the red bar, there are 31 high school districts, high school-only districts in, in the state of New Jersey. Nine of those are within our district factor group. Nine of those are within our district factor, DFG, which represents socioeconomic status. And then finally, five of the 31 are in Monmouth County. So, those are sort of the points of comparison. This is for the last year reported, which is the, the last year that was budgeted and that's, that's the data. But even for some more historical context, let's take a look at each of those spending categories. And what, the way I approached this was I used the state average for this, these grouping of high school districts as 100%. And then let's see where the other two categories, whether it's the nine within our DFG or the five Monmouth County and us, these are the three bars, how do they stack up over the years in those categories? So, for classroom instruction, we fare very well. Support services, just move through, you can, you can take a look at them. But you, you get the idea that we do fare very well in this comparison. And one of the reasons, and one of the, something that does contribute to that is our size. We are a very large district and we do have economies of scale. That is, that is real, but we use that to our benefit. Operations and maintenance, and then we jump to the next area. So, let, let me just quickly give you a brief on this while you look at it. So, that, those are, those were some of the financials. Now, for some of the performance, academic performance metrics. If you look at assessment data, and this is the most recent assessment data available on the Department of Education website, these are all school districts, not necessarily high school districts, they have high schools, could be K-12, but within our DFG, so similar socioeconomically to us. And the percentage passing on the HESPA, just to give you a sense. Now, you look up at the top there, there's actually hardly any difference in the first whole grouping, very high, but that's, that's where we shape up. And this is on language arts and on math, that, that's where we stack up there. I thought it would be interesting, and we looked at this last year a little bit, to, to, to take that information and the financial information and see how they would blend together. Now, we have to have appropriate samples, so the nine high school districts that are similar to us socioeconomically, if we were to look at, you know, the, the percentage passing, the HESPA on the left, and then how many dollars, if you took our cost per pupil and divided it by passing percentage, how many dollars did it cost to achieve one percentage point of passing? So, that's, and that's on that, on this side of the presentation. So, interesting information to look at. I thought it is one way to sort of marry those two different indicators together. This is on language arts and that's, that's the math, same information there. So, I think with a lot of the, and the school report card on the Department of Ed website, there's a lot of good information on it. There are different grades, what's your AP enrollment and what your staff has achieved. There's a lot of different indicators that you can look at. We just selected some for this presentation tonight. Really, the focus here is in the investment side and the financial side. The accolades from a district that, and this is, obviously it's far too many for me to be going on here. I have included some up there for you to look at, but I mean, I, I literally have pages of accomplishments from our students and our staff to choose from. You'll note that I did, did identify the FBLA National Winner Accounting of Marlboro High School. That was worthy of making a statement. But, and you know, there's, there's just, and much of this stuff you may be aware of, we're, we're writing the newspaper. The accomplishments are endless and a lot of that, the accomplishments of our district, whether it's our students or our staff, have yet to come with, I think, some of the guidance and our strategic plan. There's some very ambitious and really, really good stuff. From a, from a parent's point of view, you know, this is some really good stuff that I think this district is, is on the right track and really on the way to some incredibly high performance. Just some key points, you know, 2% increase in the tax levy. Our curriculum instruction, this does provide for what we need, maintains our current programs and also helps us implement some of those mandates that we discussed, meets the needs of our incoming student population as well. We are, I did include up here that below, there's 6.4 million below benchmark set by the state. That refers to the adequacy budget. You may remember when I talked about the calculation of state aid. The state does make a determination on how much should you be spending based on the characteristics of your particular school district. And then they, then they compare that to what you are spending. Not all categories are included. As Mr. Close and I were talking about earlier, things like transportation is not, you can't apply the same factors to all communities because it's so geography-specific. So, certain things like that have been removed, but we're, you know, millions of dollars under what they, what the state has calculated we should be spending. So, I think that's an important indicator of our spending practices. And then continuing support for, for capital. The other thing that has been a topic of discussion here in this room over the last several years has been our energy program that is currently on the web. We will be keeping you posted on that and it's really getting some capital maintenance items done at, at the, at the cost of the energy companies really, because you're leveraging the energy savings from those improvements to pay those improvements. And that's the spirit of it. So, you're looking to be cost-neutral at worst, if not cost-to-the-good. And we'll keep you posted on that. So, that, that's the, the budget presentation on the director. Attention to our website, which will have this, this presentation as well as PowerPoint, also links to the Department of Education website for school report card information, taxpayer guide on education spending information and any other information that is relevant to this community understanding our annual school budget and its impact on you and on your children. So, Mr. Samson?
So, just, so in my haste to walk away from the podium earlier, I'm trying to take the order myself. So, a few items. First and foremost, the public doesn't see the time that goes into putting this budget together. So, Sean is able to get up there in about 35, 40 minutes, go through sort of matter-of-fact the, the efficiencies of the budget, the challenges and the major drivers of, of a budget. And I think he doesn't seize the time, the hindices that it takes to come to that point to speak so eloquently about where we are. And I know that, if you go to him, he has a couple of years now, I'm quite confident he has a good old communist in his office at times, because he has to manage and track every initiative that is in the, in the district strategic plan, every change that comes down, the fight from state that we need to budget for appropriately, need to manage, and, and, and he has to make it work. So, that's a, that's an inordinate amount of pressure in a district with a $190 million budget and, and the scope of operations that we have. And candidly, his business office is not as large as many other districts' business offices, certainly not of similar size, but they're much smaller than we are. So, they, they get it done in an efficient manner. And there are real challenges presented by the 2% cap. And we've lived with that cap for three years now. We've been incredibly responsible with what the increases were the past two years. You know, we're flat two years ago, we're 1% last year and we're 2% this year. And we are, under Sean's vision of budgeting, able to look out multiple years as much as possible, you know, excluding volatility in state aid, which is an unknown. And I think prepare for the, for the district to move forward with its academic initiatives. And, you know, everybody throws out the phrase, the new normal and doing more with less and, and, and we understand that. And I think that our, our, our school district has answered that challenge. And I think that we realize that moving forward, it's only become increasingly difficult to maintain the programs in the way that we have. And I, and I think that we are cognizant of the fact that over time we may have to reconceptualize how we do things and refocus and reprioritize the, the services that we do or do not deliver and, 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 and measure the benefit of those. So, this is not an easy process by interest and imagination. You read in the newspaper that the state aid was the largest it's ever been, and that's true, but that state aid number is still less than it was in 2009, 2010. That's also true. So, in order to make all this work, there's a lot of planning, a lot of collaboration and there are an inordinate number of state mandates that are happening that have incredible costs attached to the state and national mandates. And, and so, we're trying to make sure that we maintain what sets us apart as a school district while also meeting those requirements. And I think that this, I think this, this budget does that pretty well and I think that that's a testament to Mr. Boyce makes it. So, thank you.
Questions from members of board?
Thank you. First thing, it was a big jump in home instruction costs for this year and expected to, and last year was big too. So, could you pretty much explain what that's all about?
Well, home instruction comes about from a variety of reasons where students aren't able to attend school and once it's beyond a certain number of days, the district is required to provide home instruction. It could be for a variety of reasons, ethical reasons, other legal reasons, disciplinary reasons, Dr. Hazel, which is to supplement that. So, my, my point is that it's, it's not, it's a reaction to a situation that is generally unforeseeable and therefore it's, it's difficult to design a budget that's, that's based on information. What we're actually going to need is more, we look at the trends and what's typical of it. Dr. Hazel, did I catch?
No, I think you're absolutely right and it's very difficult to project and every year is different. There's always unique circumstances, but once a student is out for five days, that student needs to go on home instruction. And it's, each year is, you know, a new year with new needs for students, it's very difficult to gauge.
And the, the five-day requirement has also changed in the past several years. It used to be 10 days and this school district was not responsible for home instruction. 10 days included, that's been a shift in the S O meters down to five days they got to provide home instruction. So, that also certainly.
Always medically necessitated, you know, there's always documentation from, you know, medical officials, you know, to mark that.
And, and the truth of the matter is that we see, I think, a, a general uptick in medical absentees in the use of attorneys in the school issues when a student is disciplined. All that adds up to more days out of school after that five-day window that we have to by law provide home instruction for.
Is the percentage related to discipline-related absences a significant amount in that total?
It's, it's much more on the medical side.
Right.
We could, I think we could do some due diligence on finding that, but I, I would, I would say that without a doubt, it's, it's much more heavily on the medical side.
Yeah. Just even looking at our numbers here, I mean, for long-term extensions, yeah, it's, it's a very small piece of it.
Yeah, no, I figured that, I just wanted to know. And my other question was with respect to the $550,000 that we had to spend on English and geometry textbooks related to Common Core, was that something that, the extra $550,000 was totally necessitated by Common Core or that would have been necessitated anyway?
If I could just, a quick clarification, and it could have been represented better in your report, could be that chunk of money is for textbooks inclusive of some of the building level initiatives, whether it's replacing textbooks or replacing certain selected courses versus of textbooks. And only a portion of that is really, a large portion of that, about 80% of that is related to geometry and English, so just a clarification.
But driven by the Common Core survey, Mr. Messinger, and, and we, we looked at potentially moving off of textbooks, especially for the geometry, didn't feel that that was appropriate at this, at this point in time as we move into that new curriculum and honestly, the, the software and the electronic textbooks are not cost-effective at this point in time from the traditional textbooks. They're, they're basically, you know, the same price when you get into a license fee. So, we did, we did engage in that purchase begrudgingly, that, you know, we, we looked at other, other options, certainly Mr. Moore, and a lot of conversation around that. And we settled that. We want to make sure that we appropriately set our students up for success as we move into, you know, some drastic shifts in the curriculum and stuff. Common Core, line textbook, geometry and the English, so that's the way to do that.
Oh, no, I just have one more question. Special ed, the budget's 36.7 million, which is roughly 20 or 21% of the total. So, it's 20% of the budget, what percent of the students are classified in that?
Approximately 15% of the population.
15?
Any other questions from the board? Any questions? Yes, close.
First of all, I'd like to follow your presentation and ask the question, thank you very much. A few questions we just had on the, I know our, our budget is supposed to be going to be bigger from last year, maybe going up to over $4 million. I just want to know how much out there in the surplus money. I know that for dollar, if you have it, I know we can only keep 2% of that. These are any way we can allocate the balance to the budget to reduce that $4 million because when, I know it's, with that kind of budget, I know it's not such a tremendous impact, but because of the economic situations of the country right now, a lot of people, as we heard, maybe those people that are hit, we can just kind of lower down the taxes. Like I said, I don't have to deal with the surplus, of course, it's never made known to.
Right. The, the surplus at the end of any given fiscal year is in our, our audit report, which is online. And, and as, as we've discussed, any excess surplus, which is the term for the amount over the 2% is required to be used the next time you do a budget, which is now from, you know, the last June audit report. We've also increased that to, to, for just that reason, to keep taxes, the tax increase at 2%. Anticipated another million dollars lapsing at the end of this year, so projected a million dollars lapsing and anticipated that as revenue also. So, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to best to use our, the surplus in a responsible way, in an even-keeled way, to the greatest extent that we can. And so, we have, we have not only used what's on our past balance sheet, but also projected some for this coming year and use that as well.
Yeah, because I have no problem, let's say we have so much in the surplus, we can tie them onto them, but because it's only recorded in state and we can tie them onto 2% and, and move that back to surplus. Like I said, if there's a lot more left there, I have, I'm moving that on the E construction right now. Another, another question I had, you mentioned also that from what I read on the figure, there, there will be, well, this is, we cannot be precise, but right now, the way with the figure, there is about 25 students reduction in enrollment. Now, you also mentioned, recognize longer, that in your budget right now, you are anticipating there's money that we set for teachers to be hired and our forgotten other staff that are, you know, putting in your budget right now. I'm looking at it, they have a reduction right now. I know there's uncertainties again because we are not able to, but you are not just like going to hire teachers now because it is in your budget, you will, there's a million interest in enrollment, it's like you're banking that money so that if there is a shift in the enrollment, you have the money reserved right there. Is that a reason for action?
Yeah, no, I just, I'm not sure everybody, your question is around staffing and there's provision for additional teachers in here and just the teachers being hired based on need, just to, you're confirming that that is how we approach it. And a lot of that staffing work with our students registering for their courses for next year now is coming into focus. And yes, you're right, we only do hire the staff that are required to meet the needs of the student population. The reduction or the enrollment situation, there was a slight reduction of about one percent in our enrollment. I think the elementary schools are seeing reductions as well and eventually that will come to us and we have that as part of our long-term thinking as well. So hopefully that answers your question.
I think he's also important to note that the general ed staff is reduced, that the increases are to mandated IEPs and such, so that additional staff is, the additional staff, I guess, is special education oriented with the declining population on general ed staff is actually going to be reduced. I'm trying to think of the numbers.
When are we going to see the dollar impact for town?
The question is when are we going to see the dollar impact for town is actually...
As I said, is this year for the residents to see, oh, my taxes going, because we have already an idea on the, I'm now, I'm now for eight to eight, I can make it now. I still don't have an idea about the council and other part of the distribution. I'd like to have an idea here, we hope, you know, in terms of dollar, because this is only one part.
Sure.
You have so many parts that would affect our overall taxes, so.
There was a slide earlier and I got to make my way over there and get back to it, but it did have the buy town and the buy breakdown. And then as far as what the impact on individual property tax bill is, that's...
Not in the deed book, part, part town.
The town, yes.
See if we're part of the deed book.
Yes, there's a statement, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
And just so I understand, we've had the breakdown to different towns, the tax rate, there were a few that were extremely high. That was because there were more students involved in the high school?
For different reasons. One of the, and as I said, the two factors that determine how much of that levy goes to each of the eight towns, the two factors are the value of the property in town and the number of school-aged children in town. So yes, to the extent that your high school, a particular town's high school enrollment goes up, they actually earn a greater share of that levy.
Okay, that was great, leading into that, using that one category. In terms of the overall taxes, Gloria was asking, would that tax rate be offset by the reduced membership in the feeding school in that town?
In that particular town? No, because the elementary schools don't, there is no apportionment of their tax levy, there's only one in town. So a logical question, but no, the whole purpose of the calculation is simply to determine how to break down the regional districts share. With the exception of the Malibu and English town, I guess, because they are a regional district, so I would have to look at how they apportion their taxes, but I haven't and I haven't, but it's probably on a similar basis. Okay, I'll turn it back over to you.
I need approval for February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen.
Excuse me, President, I think we're going to be open to the public that he's not in budget, mad or not?
We're not there at this time.
We're not quite there.
Look at that.
I'm sorry. Do you have a second?
First. We're there.
Okay. Thank you. Go.
Mr. Astolfo?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Two minutes?
Yes. Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mrs. Madden?
Yes. Communications are filed in the boy secretary's office and we have a lot of reports, student pension.
Thank you. So a few items. We had a district job fair during the first Saturday in March, I have to take those off to the work of jobs and putting that together to give perspective, even though our staffing is reduced along the general ed line, you have retirees, you have folks who are non-doors, you have folks who do the profession, you have folks who are out of attorney, even as such, so we have the need to always replenish our staff. And hiring, we believe, is the most important thing you can do. You hire excellent people, you get excellent results, and our district job fair is something that we run an ad advertisement and collect the number of resumes, in this case, we had about seven hundred and fifty applicants for the job fair. We whittle that down to approximately a hundred individuals. And then on Saturday, which we, for the duration of the morning, our administrators come in, we have about forty to dismiss the job fair, and we break into teams and we interview these folks. And so what ends up happening, we get out early on in, in March, and then as our openings come in April, we have a number of individuals who've already been interviewed, who've been rated by administrators. So as we have openings, we call in for candidates and we think it's an excellent way for us to get the best quality candidates early in the process. So that happened in the first weekend in March and I thought it was a, it's one of the events that I have the most fun, because you're there on a Saturday morning and people have different breaks, they're coming, you have a coffee together and you're out here, it's a smaller group of teams interviewing and it's, I think it really puts a positive light on our school district. We also, some of you may have read in newspapers the past couple of days over the new method through which the New Jersey Department of Education categorize school districts. They're using something called peer groupings at this point in time. So I'll give you a brief synopsis and some of the considerations of some of the questions and concerns with the new groupings. Traditionally, the state of New Jersey focused school districts into district factor groups and district factor group, groups were, most of the components were based on socioeconomic status of the town, of the municipality. And there were a number of financial criteria that sort of broke those groupings down and they were from A through J and alpha and A the poorest communities and in our state J being the wealthiest. The state is moving away from that and they're moving to these peer groupings where each individual school, not district, so the real regional high school district is a GH factor group. Each individual school will now be put in with thirty other peer groups. And what the state is seeking to do is to represent that in a way where you are categorized with thirty other schools and approximately fifteen are performing higher than you in some capacity and fifteen are performing, lack of a better term, lower than you in some capacity, so you're sort of right in the middle. And the state says they're going to put these out and then put them out in alphabetical lists so that, you know, to avoid rankings and such. And schools are measured under criteria that comprise academic achievement, college and career readiness and graduation and post-secondary outcomes. We had some concerns over how that data was represented from our district and I think a large swath of the state had had some concerns. There are some questions, you know, so the categorization of schools is based primarily first and foremost on the percentage of reintroduced lunch students in your school district, but the range is zero to ten percent. And what that leaves us in New Jersey in that range is that leaves the high schools of real regional high school district, five of the six high schools, in a subcategory of only a hundred and fifteen possible schools that they can even be grouped with. Secondary indicators are the percentage of limited English efficiency students and percentage of special ed population in your school district, which is a bit problematic to me because generally everybody's going to fall within eleven, fifteen, sixteen percent. There's not the range that you usually see some outliers, there's not the range in that statewide. And so, and there's no distinction between schools that have entrance criterias and schools that are tier publics. So, you know, you could have a school district that only takes the top ten students from particular areas and they're grouped in with your peer group in a public school that takes all students. I have no problem with that. The rankings are, for us, you know, we're waiting on some more information, a little bit problematic. You have, for instance, we have Howe High School grouped with Milburn High School, some of their peer groups. The wealth of those communities are fundamentally different. Would have been a wait and see how this, how the state sort of recalibrates some of this data. A number of our students take the ACT, for instance. The ACT was not used as one of those indicators of academic achievement, yet the PSAT was, but it's only being used as a placeholder until part test becomes in play. The utilization of data as a placeholder that becomes public knowledge in a short period of time, for me, is highly problematic. So we've expressed some of our concerns and I have to say that, you know, the Department of Education officials have been responsive in answering some of our questions. They embargoed the data, so the data hasn't been made public yet. It was to have been made public, I believe, late this week or early next week and they've delayed that at this point in time because they've recognized that there are some significant data issues that they have. But this puts, this puts our schools in a whole different light because our six high schools will have their own individual peer groups and some of them are, might be in one another's peer group, but most are not. So everybody has their own peer group. Some of our high schools may be sort of at the high end of the list for somebody else's peer group and maybe at the low end of the list for somebody else's peer group. And this is sort of going to be reset on an annual basis, although they say that the peer groups will remain relatively stable because those percentages of reintroduced lunch, limited English efficiency and special ed percentage will remain relatively stable. Schools are being counseled to use this data in ways through which they can find improvement in their schools and to be flexible with how you tend to utilize this data. I'm a bit skeptical of what that looks like long-term and especially when, if on an annual basis, your groups are in the middle of these other schools and it's often difficult to measure your improvement over time. We'll see how it all turns out, but, you know, I'm sure that we're, they do make that data publicly available, that there'll be a lot of questions around. So that's where we're at with it. I shared with the board members an email that I had sent to the Department of Education expressing some of the district concerns here for us as it relates to some of the data and really concerned, especially about the ACT test. We were told that only twenty-two percent of the state takes that assessment so that there weren't enough folks to compare that to, but that's leaving out a whole big piece of assessment that we feel is aligned to the Common Core, gives us a much better gauge special area ACT H four test that we give to ninth grade students of how well we're performing as a school district. So we'll continue to raise those concerns and we'll see where the, where the state takes this with New Jersey school performance and the high schools will be fundamentally judged in a very different manner moving forward.
Mr. Stacey has a question.
Yeah.
Do they take into account the size of the schools?
No.
The number of students, because I actually student taught in Milburn High School way back then and it's a smaller building, I mean, than Howe High School, so it's the bigger, vast, you know, characteristic of the socio, I understand Milburn, Short Hills, I know the area, we're close by, but what about the fact that there's more students or there's more diversity in Howe compared to there?
The size is not something that they've taken into consideration in how they have drawn the peer groups. And they told us that we would see a, there's a lot more elementary and middle schools than our high schools in the state, so they warned us that we would see a much wider range in our peer groups with high schools because they have fewer of them to draw comparisons for, but it's a difficult comparison when you take size out and you're having a high school with twenty-five hundred students compared to a high school with a thousand, compared to a high school with five hundred. You know, my previous district, they ended up on a list with some very large high schools. They ran one, the average income was, I think, ninety-seven thousand per family and another school on their peer list was a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So the state took no community factors into consideration. The intent is to truly measure the demographics of the students in the schools, but the socioeconomic status of the town and the company of educational attainment level of that community can basically speak to somewhere around sixty percent of student achievement. It's right there, socioeconomic status, student achievement. So that's, I question sort of how that's not included in some capacity and wonder if it's the best gauge of just measuring progress, but we'll see how this all plays out. We've also, we've continued to move forward with our teacher evaluation implementation. I was at a presentation with a number of the building principals and assistant principals today at NJPSA, Super Rogers Principals Association, with Tim McEnney, who is the individual from state who's in charge of implementing the new teacher evaluation, gave a two-hour overview of the evaluation expectations. We're very, very much on board with the teacher practice piece to evaluation. Remember, this is, you know, so the state's dividing evaluations up with teacher practice and then measures student achievement. As a high school only district, the, what's known as student growth percentiles, that's the students' growth on state assessments from year to year to year, largely not going to impact us in the next couple of years here for real regional because the HESPA is not a test, you know, it's not a yearly test, it's a one-shot deal, year to year, we're moving to PARC. So we're going to be able to rely on internal data for fifteen percent of that student assessment piece. They did explicitly state today that their intention over time, as PARC is phased in with language arts and mathematics, teachers in those areas, that they will increase the percentage of a teacher's evaluation to fifty percent of student achievement data. I have some real concerns over SGP's and what that looks like. And they're taking the median in a class, so if you have twenty students in a class, the average might be eighty-three, but the median was seventy-five. The seventy-five is the SGP number that gets assigned to the teacher. That eliminates outliers, but still causes potential problems where you may have two teachers, in my estimation, I'm no mathematician, I'm sure there's a lot of people, I'm sure Sean and Mary Ann at the cable will know more than I do statistically, I'm just a social studies guy, but it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. I'm sorry, I'm stressful. So there's some fundamental questions with this and we'll see how it rolls down. I do think there are a lot of positives in the teacher evaluation requirements, there's been a real collaborative dialogue, there's been a real re-engagement over discussion and looking critically at instructional practices that improve student achievement. So a lot of positives there, but when you get into the SGP, there's no longitudinal studies to say that this is going to work. We don't, and I asked at the workshop today, that we have thirty pilot districts in the state and I would love to see the data of how those SGP scores have impacted teacher summative evaluations. And as they are moving forward and they're more than a year, and in some cases, two years ahead of us, I hope that the state makes that available. They did seem to be open to listening to that because we can learn from that. I mean, that can inform our practice and, you know, a lot of this is time-sensitive because... And, and, you know, a lot of this is time-sensitive because of the no child let me on waiver, so the, you know, the state said we will, you know, commit to A, B, C, and D by this period of time in order to get this waiver. So, much of it is sort of, you know, the, the ship has sailed, right? So, we want to make sure that we implement it in the most meaningful manner, in the most fair and in the least capricious manner possible in this school.
Thank you. Board reports, policy, Mr. Bruno?
I got it. Policy meet, the policy meeting met on Tuesday, March nineteenth, reviewed concussion policy and the athletic competition policy, time adjustments on the school day policy, and we have, our second meeting on some of the policies that are attached tonight.
My answer, Paul.
We met on Tuesday, the, the whole meeting was essentially focused on the budget, which Sean and I just spent an hour discussing. So, we went over that in some detail and the only other thing that we talked about in detail that wasn't talked about tonight was really more in-depth analysis of how the state determines, the state A figure, basically. So, Sean basically went over with us how the, the state goes about telling you what you should be spending on education and the state also tells you how much the community could afford to pay and the calculations behind, you know, their determination of how their, you know, they give us certain more of the numbers, basically. And that was really the only other thing that we talked about beyond the budget, which was just discussed.
Thank you. Now, can I report with information?
Yes, just one, I just wanted, there's a yellow addendum in the back and also there's one chain on page seven, under Donald Leefo, it's Marlboro High School, Freehold Township.
Paulson, do you want to speak? No one signed up, so.
Okay, I just want to ask a question. I know tonight is the third presentation of Mr. Samson on substance abuse. I remember the first few ones, I always asked, how are we approaching the drug problems in our school? And frankly, I really did not get a direct answer. I, I am a member of the Drug Alliance of Manalapan and not too long ago, we had a meeting and there were so many students there and parents. Of course, the topic's always about drug, use of drugs. It was, it was so shocking because it's, the problem is not only marijuana, but they're using a lot of substances, which you can't even tell that they're, you know, when the kids talk about Molly. So, I said, well, that's a pretty, they asked us, what is Molly? So, I said to them, well, that's a beautiful name for a woman. It's not, it's a very potent drug. So, let's say two, two students are using drugs and they used to say, do you have Molly or do you know Molly? So, you really can trace that they're talking about drugs. And they also said about the use of the hand symptoms, they drink that. I was, you know, every time I go to this meeting, I'm so taken back and my heart bleeds when I hear the, the, the drug abuse, you know, that this young generation are using and I did ask, there were parents, there weren't, once, I would not say the, the sex of the individual, the person's hope. And I was so devastated because he was basically, the birds are crying because he lost his daughter, not dead, but basically like he lost a child being a drug addict. And then somebody at the, I guess a psychology from one of his schools, they were addressing it very proactive, or the schools are very proactive in addressing the drugs and the parents, they were saying, no, they were nodding their head, they said, I'm talking about Manalapan. We have drugs and, and, and they're saying, I wish they can really address that. And there's so many parents talking about, and the children, students were there and, and you can feel that there is a really tremendous problem, drug problems, I would again use Manalapan. So, then I spoke to them, to some parents and I said, you know, I really sympathize with what you have gone through with the children because when a, when a child really comes a drug addict, there's so little you can do. So, I said, you know, you're very concerned because the person was saying, I can only help a child. So, I said to them, why don't you go to the Freehold Regional meeting because it's a proper venue for you to, to address this problem. The, the Drug Alliance is only a segment, it's a small portion, and I know they give you presentation on drugs in the school, but it's a tiny. But I said, I thank for you people, for the parents and the students, you should all come here and tell that administration in the board, yes, we have drug problems. It's not just the, the way you presented it, it says Samson, marijuana. It's not so common now, the marijuana, because they're doing so many things that I was so taken back, I never heard of. And as you can see, you know, and also we're saying, when you had, I can't remember, you know, the, the figures there, it seems that we're all declining. I wish I could believe that. And then I go to my Drug Alliance meeting and all the, and they're talking about, you know, the, the way these students are using different kinds of drugs, that there's so much going on, again, in my school, Manalapan High School. I don't know about the other school because I don't belong to either class, I belong to Manalapan, so I'm trying to bring that to your attention. So, I don't know. Like I said, this is the third time of your presentation, but I'm, I'm still, I'm still doubting whether we're addressing the, the drug problems in the school. And some, one, one person there said, why don't we bring the gloves, you know, to smell the lacquer or whatever? I know during the previous superintendent, we were talking about that, but there was an objection to that. So, I don't know. I don't want to say, yeah, you know, the way we're going down, the way you presented it, since everything is on the decline, then I go to the meeting, I listen to the parents, I listen to the students, bunch of students, not young, high school students, they're talking about drugs and people using drugs in the school. And then I said, so what's going on? Do we have a presentation here? The first presentation you had, I asked you, how is it being addressed? I heard you were proactive because the, I guess she's a psychologist from the school, she said, yeah, we're very proactive in addressing, I like the sound of proactive, but there's still a lot of students that are falling into drug use. And I know a lot, I have friends whose kids are in high school and, and it really breaks my heart as a mother to hear that because we can offer the best education that these students can get, but if we don't address and we deny ourselves that drug problems do exist, we're going to lose students, we're going to lose children and they will become drug addicts. So, please look into that, not just the chart that say, oh, wow, looking at that, we have a decline, we have a decline at the hip, we have a decline, it's only the marijuana is the one that kind of somehow steady, that we went down two points, but the other ones, yeah, we all went down. Please look into that because I wish you were there, Mr. Samson, on the Drug Alliance we had at the last meeting. You'll be taken back when all those parents and all those students, and like I said, as a mother, it leads my way.
And I, and I appreciate that, of course, not reiterate from the presentation that the substance abuse in the state, the incidents of violence and vandalism, what I would worry was down. We've, we've come here, Dr. Hazel gave a hour-long presentation at the end of last year on all of our proactive measures that we do to combat drugs. No one from this administration, none of my building principals, none of my administrators have ever stood up and said that drugs are not a problem in our schools. We recognize that in two thousand thirteen, drugs are a problem in every high school period. The marijuana list, what I said was marijuana remains the drug of choice, there was a list of about twenty other items that are under that, that were different types of drugs that, you know, that are in use. We don't stick our heads in the sand here, we're very active with our municipal alliances in each of our six high schools, there's, there's a lot of work there. I went tonight, I gave an overview of a cutting-edge training program that we have in this district involving dozens of our staff members on being more aware and proactive to spot signs of drug abuse and drug use and substance use so that they can more effectively identify that and report that to get those students help. We, we placed Miss Sharp as a Director of Operations and one of the things that was one of her responsibilities is to work directly with the SACS who did not have direct oversight in previous years to make sure that we coordinate programs and such around our schools. We bring in dozens and dozens of guest speakers over the course of the year. We have all sorts of drug prevention programs. I listed very quickly in PowerPoint today, a number of the, the clubs and activities that are designed to be proactive against drugs and such. We don't pretend to think that we'll ever stop all drug use from teenagers in, in this day and age, but we do believe that we have a number of programs that help kids make better decisions, that help students who have made poor decisions and that are proactive in spotting students who might make poor decisions and identifying them appropriately. So, I think on multiple levels in the school district, we're aggressively addressing this, but we have eleven thousand six hundred teenagers and, and, and we try to the best we can to help them make, make good decisions. And, and what nobody's ever been up here saying that we don't have drugs in our high schools and, you know, this is America two thousand thirteen, every high school has, has, has something in it or has the kid, kids who are using, whether that's alcohol or drugs, and we recognize that and we try to deal with that in sort of proactive manners as possible.
I think another important point to remember is that students' life is a district's compliance in the high school, is that before September number two, they're out doing something somewhere. So, it can't just be on, on, yeah, it has to be a partnership with the community of parents and schools because we, those are instances that we catch in school, there's a lot of instances that happen on Friday night, Saturday night, where other ones call over the police and there are legal issues or drug use that isn't caught. And that's what, you know, students and the lines are speaking of, a lot of them are probably talking about drug use that was never caught.
Or disengaged.
Or, or parents are disengaged. So, it has to be, it's a problem that has to be addressed at all, right, it's just.
Mr. Samson, also this year, Mrs. Sharp and the SACS, working with the building principals, we had our captive audience, we had our team drive our safety program, we had a component of that program really devoted to making, making, you know, good choices, focusing in on substance abuse while we had all of the families there. That's where the junior class and all of the junior parents must be in attendance. Also, our SACS are working really hard when students are in need and need a substance abuse program. They are actively working to get kids scholarships into various programs. So, there's been a very, very strong effort this year to really be very proactive and be really working hand in hand with the families, with our SAC departments.
And the students are not feeling self-denied and saying, no, I'm not using drugs, right? They are admitting they're using, who did the facilitator just say, who made it?
Well, I think what we're doing with our program this year, we have an addiction specialist working with our staff, with our administrators, so that they can identify the signs because sometimes we don't doubt. We want to have proactive programs in our schools so that we present awareness to our parents and to our students, but we also want to make sure that our teachers are trained to be able to see when a student's grades slip or maybe when they're out from school for a couple of days, that we take a real proactive stance in working with the families and see what the problem is, not what our SACS and our guidance counselors do. And, you know, over the past couple of years, they've got connections with so many different, you know, treatment programs and organizations to help students and help families, even for families that can't afford it. We're getting students in there on scholarships, you know, if parents don't have medical insurance. It's, it's, I think, all of our principals, all of our, our support staff, I mean, we're in this one hundred percent, again, I think, you know, Mary Ann said it best, I mean, we're with them, we're educating them during the day. What they do before school or after school is sometimes out of our control, but if we see something, we are on it, you know, in an instant.
On the, the, I've been reading lately about the energy drinks and I, I read about students who have actually died, you know, for a particular, I think it was GNC, which was exposed on the day of the, of the chemical compound, what was it? Yeah, the super caffeine, whatever. So, there's that and you have the other scrupulous doctors prescribing the Adderall for the honor students who want, you know, get the high grades and all that. It's shocking because I read about students who have actually increased their uptake of these, of Adderall, let's say, and who's actually passed away, they died, the students have collapsed, you know, after taking, drinking those, it's insidious, you know, I think that, is that covered too, the energy drinks and stuff like that?
I mean, there are.
Because that, you know, people, some people don't consider that.
Some of these energy drinks are fundamentally different than what they were five years ago, so, you know, it, it started with, you know, things like Red Bull, right, which were just a lot of caffeine, and now it's moved into this, this whole other realm of what might or might not be in those drinks, you know, but for us, anything that is, is an illegal substance is an illegal substance, whether it's in an energy drink, whether it's in an alcoholic drink or whether it's in something that the kid mixes on their, on their own, so, you know, when we suspect someone is under any influence of drugs or alcohol, they're sent out to a, a drug screen and we don't distinguish what they may have been consuming if we think that they're, if they're under the influence, you know, they go for, for a drug screen.
I guess as part of the health and nutrition, which they used to actually emphasize in school, that was part of the curriculum, you know, it's part of the health and.
Absolutely, so is.
Yeah, it's part of our health curriculum.
Yes, in the beginning, Mr. Sam, in the beginning of your presentation, you, you mentioned that you moving or eliminating the home room period lowered the incident rate, how does that work? How does that affect the incident rate?
There's fewer passing times in the hallway, so there's fewer times where all two thousand kids.
Right, so there's, there's less, there's less, you know, your, your incidents don't
tend to happen in class. You know, your incidents tend to happen in hallways when a kid passed, kid bumps, kid acts, kids, one kid sees another kid, they've had an argument or something, you know, so you, you take out one full passing time from the school day where everybody's out moving around in, in, in hallways and they're in a classroom and you also send a clear message. You know, I think that students were not necessarily sprinting to home room in those cases because they knew they could go to the home room period, they had, you know, five minutes or so where nothing was going to happen and another bell was going to ring, they're going to have five more minutes out in the hallway. Now, they go to school, first period starts, they're expected to be there, they're learning and it sets a fundamentally different tone for the school day. So, you know, we just knew that nothing, nothing else changed at the start of the school year, yet in each one of our six buildings, it was remarkably much more quiet in terms of the number of, of, of poor interactions than it had ever been and the only variable that changed was the elimination of home room. So, again, you know, I'm a social studies guy, so I didn't run some statistical analysis on this, other than to think that we changed one thing and you saw the numbers, we had fifteen incidents in the entire month in, in, in school districts, so, and we attribute that to just starting today in more orderly fashion.
Any other questions? All right. Can I have a motion to move the agenda, H1 to L3?
Sure.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Mr. Estesola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mrs. Tama, Tama?
Yes.
Any old business on the board? New business?
Yes, I have one bit of new business, I guess this is the time to say it. I would be remiss if I didn't thank Sean for the wonderful presentation today. I think that, you know, I pass a lot of notes up through all time and what I wrote was something that Chuck and I said that really his presentation was second to none in the state. Thank you so much, Sean. Great job.
Under what?
She said H1, she said H1.
Can I have a motion for the adoption of the budget? Someone. Second?
Second.
Some more.
Second?
Second.
Roque?
Mr. Estola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Ms. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Taman?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Uh, question?
So, I have one other issue that I failed to mention during new business. Just wanted to report back that earlier this evening, we met with the custodians, and we finalized the memorandum of agreement with respect to the negotiations, which have been one outstanding part we need to get out there. So, that's now...
Jeff?
Mr. Estola sort of stole my thunder, but I did want to say something as well. We've been doing this for a while, 21 years, and the best budget presentation I had ever heard was about five or six years ago, Sean's first. I've worked with a lot of BAs, and I was immediately impressed. And I just wanted to say that in those five or six years, his presentations have just consistently gotten better. And I think we all owe him a debt of thanks for making the whole thing an understandable process for us. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?